Good afternoon and welcome to the forty-first meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your cell phones. And if you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for the commission's reporter. And if you're here to testify on any matter on this agenda, please come forward, be sworn in, identify yourself, and spell your name. Thank you very much. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for your consideration.
Yes Chair, motion to approve the minutes of the thirty-fourth meeting as previously circulated.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I vote aye. The minutes of the thirty-fourth meeting are approved. Moving into the public hearing, agenda item number one, transfer application on round eight dash one three five eight three from Hilton Hawaiian Villages.
Good afternoon Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. I'm not going to turn to you on behalf of the applicant.
Please have a seat and be comfortable sir.
Thank you so much. And with is Mr. Jeffrey Yedlin, Y E D L I N, who is with the Hawaiian Village.
Very good. Ms. O'Leary.
Uh, thank you Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April eighteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioner?
Motion to approve transfer application number one eight dash one four eight three.
Second. Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number two, transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one four eight five one. Oh, I'm sorry. Transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine from RNC JL LLC, Mr. Luke.
Yes. Good afternoon Mr. Chair and members of the commission. To my right is a member, Sean Chu Lee, scarring has been provided. In the record reflect Wayne Luke is constant, we have noted you had to investigate this.
Thank you. Ms. O'Leary.
Thank you Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April eighteen preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Mr. Luke. I see that there's been a lot of violations at this occasion, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Two in twenty nineteen already.
What's that?
Two this year already.
Oh, the one is part of because of the transfer that they, whoever did the transfer, they did the transfer before commission.
Okay. Is your client prepared to take over this?
Yes, we are taking over.
This is in Palolo Valley, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And your client is aware of this area, familiar with the area?
Yes.
Very close to the middle school? And other areas, right, with minors? So you're prepared? Okay. Motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number two, transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine is approved.
Good luck.
Okay.
Now we'll move on to agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one four eight five one from Huge Hospitality Universal Co., against. Are you ready Mr. Luke?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, to my right is the Vice President, Mr. Atushi Iwasa. He is, uh, scarring has been provided. To my left behind me is Donna Tain. She is the translator in case of detail. And I'm in the record reflect Wayne Luke is constant.
Moving, Ms. O'Leary.
Uh, thank you Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the March twenty-first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? See, yes sir, please come forward. Come forward, be sworn in, and introduce yourselves, spell your name for our commission people.
Do you share that the testimony given today is, you know, be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You can have a seat.
Thank you. My name is Walter Foal. I'm here at the behest of my mother who's a hundred years old and who's the, uh, the landlord of the property on which this, uh, restaurant will be starting to serve business. They've been so patient in getting their building permit, we wanted to come forward, my mom insisted that I be here to support this application because they've had to endure a lot of bureaucracy. They're getting close to opening their doors, we wanted to ensure that they were able to do so. I just wanted to make a statement in support of the application, that basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, thank you for coming.
Okay, I have one, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you know other protesters, Commissioners, type of action please?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four eight five one.
Second. Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one four eight five one is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Calling agenda item number four of the public hearing, application number one nine dash one five two three six from Jungle Bar LLC.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this matter was, uh, continued, um, has, uh, was continued. Public hearing kept open to today's meeting. You have in your packets a letter from counsel for the applicant requesting that the matter, um, be continued further to the May sixteenth meeting. Uh, so the commission will need to continue the public hearing, uh, leave the public, uh, keep it open and then continue to May sixteen. My understanding there are some testifiers in the audience however.
Okay, so with that being said, let me call for Mr. Robert Berry. I don't see him. But he signed a.
So if you would like to testify today, we can take your testimony today. If you would like to come back, um, if on, on the sixteenth, you can come back, but we don't want to inconvenience you. So if you'd like to testify today, you can testify today.
It's okay.
Okay, very good. Are there any other in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Okay, may I have a motion?
Yes sir, motion to continue application number one nine dash one five two three six to May sixteen, the public hearing kept open.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one five two three six, uh, is continued to May sixteenth with the public, uh, hearing kept open. Thank you for coming. Calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one five six one seven from Rock Island LLC. Good afternoon.
Aye.
Michael Gelfo, G E L F O, for Rock Island Cafe.
Very good. Ms. O'Leary.
Uh, thank you Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the March twenty-first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six one seven.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one five six one seven is approved.
Thank you.
These are license applications, special license applications, agenda, agenda item number six. Application number one nine dash one six three three four dash one, dash two, dash three, dash four, uh, and dash five from Hawaii H I S Corporation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chicago Eldren, E L G I N, for Hawaii H I S.
Commissioners, questions?
Yes, Ms. Eldren.
Eldren, yes.
Uh, what is, uh, what are these special licenses for?
Um, we are planning to open this lounge, um, effective June fifth, so we just wanted to have like a soft opening to invite industry people, just like a gathering.
So this is like a soft grand opening?
Yes.
Motion to approve applications number one nine dash one six three three four dash one through one nine dash one six three three four dash five inclusive.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number six, applications number one nine dash one six three three four one, dash, dash one through one nine dash one six three three four dash five, inclusive, are approved.
Thank you, good luck.
Is approved, are approved. Okay, thank you. Calling agenda item number seven. Application number one nine dash one six three five one, Free Spirits, L L C, gentlemen.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Anthony Tsuetsu, member of Free Spirits, with me today is one of our managing members, Matthew Choi.
Very good. Commissioners. This is for a special general license, Aloha from Hawaii, thank you.
Just wanna take a look at your folks layout.
There's, um.
I have a question, and this, so this is for the after party.
Correct.
And the event is happening at another local.
Correct. So the concert event, I believe, was approved last hearing, last week's hearing. And so it's a few blocks, uh, down the road.
Yes, right, on the sidewalk, is that correct?
It's in, uh, the, it's a kind of a warehouse area.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Is it enclosed though?
The after-party area is here.
Right, so it, it's like a warehouse building?
Correct.
Okay.
There's some green playing at that concert?
At the concert event.
They are?
Yes.
Very nice. The vocal award winner.
Yes.
Oh, you think I'm that old? Tell you what's happening in the community.
Very hip.
That's my nephew.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six three five one.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one six three five one is approved. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight. Application, yeah, okay, so we're gonna take, we're gonna write down the line here.
Yeah.
After we do the first one, okay? Application number one nine dash one six three eight nine from Bamboo Catering Inc.
Good afternoon, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any question? This is for a graduation party.
It's that time of year again, isn't it Mr. Webb?
Yeah, it is that time of year, you know, it's, um.
Okay, graduation party. Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six three eight nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one six three eight nine is approved. Calling agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six four three eight. Mr. Webb?
Good afternoon, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Commissioners, this is for a graduation party.
I have one question, Mr. Webb, I know you have several applications for similar events.
Yes.
The prior one about a hundred people, this one about two hundred, how do you determine the amount of security personnel for each of these events?
General rule of thumb is, uh, is one security officer is good for anything up to about two hundred. Unless it's gonna be like an MMA fight, then we do like one per every hundred. So let's say we have an MMA fight and there's gonna be three hundred people there, we'll have three HPD officers. But a grad party, a lot more low-key, lot less drinking.
Okay, good.
Because half the people are under twenty-one anyway.
Sure. And we wanna make sure those have, do not consume alcohol, is that right?
So, and we check IDs.
Okay.
We're very cognizant of that.
Good, thank you. Very good. Good question.
Anything further? Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four three eight.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six four three eight is approved. Calling agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one six four three nine, this is retirement, uh, party, Commissioners?
I can assume a lot of these people are gonna be over twenty-one at a retirement party.
Yes, it's gonna be my. What about the grand show?
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four three nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one six four three nine is approved. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six four four zero, this is graduation party at the Philcom Center.
Good afternoon, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four four zero.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six four four zero is approved. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one six four four one.
Good afternoon, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
This is another graduation party.
Motion, oh, go ahead.
No, no, Commissioners.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four four one.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one six four four one is approved. Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one six five zero nine.
Good afternoon, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six five zero nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one six five zero nine is approved. Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one six five two five.
Good afternoon, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six five two five.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one six five two five is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Moving into the preliminary hearings, agenda item number fifteen, transfer application number one nine dash one four eight eight nine from Jiao Kai Chee of Cal Chee Restaurant. Mr. Luke?
In the record reflect Wayne Luke has the authorized agent and attorney for the applicant. Uh, the applicant did make it for the temporary licenses, which she is now presently on temporary. But, uh, she couldn't make it today, she had to go cook. So I can answer all questions.
Cook in the restaurant? Cook in the her, in the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Commissioners, how are things going under the temporary license?
It's so far done, it's alright.
Good. And she has, she has complete possession of all of the record?
Yes.
Right?
Motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one four eight eight nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, transfer application number one nine dash one four eight eight nine is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one five nine five eight from Leah Bakedry Inc. Mr. Luke?
Mr. Chairman, to my right is Angela Choi. She is the executive assistant to Peter Kim, the president. She is president with counsel Wayne Luke. They have been operating under temporary license at Macy's over the last month or so. No problems.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, do you have any question?
How are things going? So. Well, compared to your other locations. Okay, um, I do have here that there's already been a violation though occurred in, in the March.
March one thousand nine.
No?
Probably.
Alright. Anything further?
Pardon?
Does anyone have any other question?
No, no question. We'll address that adjudication in a second manner.
Okay.
Very good.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five nine five eight.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one five nine five eight is approved. Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number one nine dash one six zero four five from Limon Capole LLC. Limon? Am I pronouncing it right?
Oh, that might be, uh, in, uh, Mr. Zebakalan.
Oh, okay, um, do we have, no, uh, we will, uh, put this aside to the end of the agenda. Mr. Zebakalan called his car blew up. Okay, remind me seventeen, I think.
Yeah.
Calling agenda item number, um, eighteen, application number one nine dash one six zero seven six from White Sands owner LLC.
Yes Chair, due to conflict, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this agenda item.
Very good, thank you Commissioner Lee. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Tina O'Hira, authorized agent and attorney for the applicant. Beside me sits Ben Rafter, his last name is spelled R A F T E R, he's the general manager for the hotel.
Thank you very much, nice to see you sir.
See you.
Appreciate you coming. Commissioners?
This is for White Sands Hotel, correct? Correct.
One question, the investigative report indicates, and I think it's maybe speculation at this point, that noise containment in the open lanier may be, um, poor. I'm wondering if you could address that or if that's gonna be addressed through the construction process?
Yeah, so I'm, I'll, Ben will speak to that in a second, but so construction is ongoing, that's also why we were unable to get the zoning clearance. We have to close out the permit and then we can get the zoning clearance. But yes, the noise containment, I think, will be addressed in the construction, but also, uh, you know, the hotel itself will implement measures to make sure noise is contained and doesn't get out of hand. We're respectful of our neighbors, we know that, you know, there are a number of neighbors around us, residences, other hotels, and we certainly don't want them, you know, to be dissatisfied with our presence. And Ben will speak more specifically to the noise containment.
So there's an interior courtyard in the hotel, the courtyard is surrounded by the buildings of the hotel. And then, um, for that particular exterior area, um, we put a cap on where things can be served. So like a pagoda-like roof. And then there's actually a waterfall that we chose not to demolish, an existing waterfall that breaks out the sound for noise. So we're pretty confident that between all of that, the noise won't be depressed. And at night, uh, after the outside area is closed, it will be moved into the interior of the hotel.
I was, I was just gonna ask about that, what time does the full area close?
Uh, I think we have it planned right now to close it at ten.
Very good, thank you.
Anything further? Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six zero seven six.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, application number one nine dash one six zero seven six is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Can we have Commissioner Lee back in the conference, or is this?
It's nineteen is Mr. Zebakalan's, uh, matter.
Let's move to the end.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move this one to the end.
Yeah.
So that's seventeen and nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Seventeen, okay.
I can come back in so you can.
Do you have a security?
Yeah.
Yeah, except we're gonna have to continue twenty because we're not in that form.
Yes, okay, let me, let me call it, is that correct Ms. O'Leary?
And I just suddenly.
Yeah, that's what we're.
Yes.
Let me call it and, and, okay, so this is, uh, a request, agenda item number twenty. Request number one nine dash one six five five three from FEC Comorp. Partners, Commissioners?
Yes Chair, due to a conflict, I might have to recuse myself from this agenda item.
I think, um, for purposes of continuing the matter, although I have a conflict and would otherwise recuse, this is non-substantive for continuation purposes.
Right. I would, I would agree with.
And I think we both can remain in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, because of that, I don't think we have quorum, my client was here, I, when I realized that we didn't have quorum, then I sent her home. So I'd like to continue this to a date worked out with administration. Because in this matter, where I was gonna have two commissioners recusing themselves, so that's okay with the commission?
Um, so should we continue to next available and then you folks work it up?
Yeah.
Next available.
Yeah, okay.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty, request number one nine dash one six five five three to the next available date.
Second. Oh, no. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty. Re- request number one nine dash one six five five three is approved. Did you wanna, um?
No, it's continue, it's continue.
Uh, continue, uh, to the next available date, did you want to recuse or vote, not vote?
Yeah, I should have voted.
We still, uh, you, you voted?
I should have voted.
You shouldn't vote, I think.
Commission at least vote will be stricken from the record.
You will recuse. Yeah.
Right?
Thank you.
And for the record, mine will remain because I believe this is non-substantive and so there's really no actual conflict.
And I agree with that, um, just the commission knows, uh, Ms. Wedding Heart, which is gonna have a conflict in the next couple of weeks, so she may not appear, I will. But, and, yeah, I will.
As long as you're the authorized agent.
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. All right, let's move on to, let's move back to agenda item number seventeen. Uh, application number one nine dash one six zero four five from Limon Capole LLC.
Aloha Chair, members of the commission, pardon my tardiness. Uh, Emmanuel Zebakalan here on behalf of Limon Ortesiri. Uh, we have no changes or comments on the investigative report and can answer any questions you may have.
Could you say that one more time? I like that how it sounds, okay, what is it, Limon?
Limon.
Limon, thank you so much. Call it good for saying? We, okay, Commissioners?
I just have one question, um, on your, on your, um, floor plan, this dash area, is that an outdoor area?
Uh, so half of the dash area is outdoor area and half is, uh, indoor space. The shutters open so that connects the two, um, so the part further to the right, um, this area here is an outdoor seating space.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, this area here is an indoor seating space, but this area does connect and allow them to open the shutters.
Okay, and that's your proposed dancing area, where, if and when you folks have dancing?
Correct, and we, um, did apply for the temporary permit, the trial permit. Um, so they have tried it there, they haven't had any, um, type of negative feedback, uh, so it's, it went for ninety days and, and everything went well.
Thank you.
And there, there's no dancing allowed by the law?
Uh, currently in the lease structure, there's no dancing allowed, but we are in discussions with the landlord to have them write a letter so that, uh, when the final hearing comes through, everything will be squared away.
Okay, very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six zero four five.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, application number one nine dash one six one one seven is approved.
We're on seven.
We're on seven. See then what happens when you use Zebakalan?
I, I apologize.
I'll jam up, right? Okay, let's go to agenda item number seventeen. Application number one nine dash one six zero four five is approved.
Perfect.
Are we on the same page?
Yes, we are, and now we're going to agenda item nineteen.
Okay. And Mr. Zebakalan is still sitting there, that's why I addressed that agenda item. Calling agenda item number nineteen, application number one nine dash one six one one seven from Istanbul Restaurant Inc.
Aloha Chair, members of the commission, Emmanuel Zebakalan here on behalf of Istanbul Restaurant Inc. Uh, we've reviewed the investigative report and have no comments or edits, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any question?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six one one seven.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, application number one nine dash one six one one seven is approved. I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, application number one nine dash one six one one seven is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, here we go now, watch for now, calling agenda item number twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Jumped way over there. Uh this is uh request number one nine dash one six five six three from Honolulu Academy of Arts, afternoon.
Good afternoon, um I'm Tonya Nosa, I'm the Director of Finance.
Okay, so this is a request, a waiver of requirement to submit personal history and affidavit for twenty-eight uh specified members. And I'm assuming those are all board members and things like that?
Uh yes, that's all uh Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees. So would you represent to this commission that none of the twenty-eight specified members has ever been convicted of felony?
Yes, I will.
Commis- Commissioners, do you have any question?
Do any of these members um have any oversight or managerial responsibilities over the licensed premises in regards to the service and sale of alcohol?
Um they are a governing board, um so management of the museum um provides the oversight of over the areas, that's their of alcohol.
So is that a yes or a no?
Oh, that would be a no, they're more of a governance board.
So they govern the overall organization, but the management of the service and sale of alcohol is handled by someone else?
Handled by the management of these, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one six five six three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, request number one nine dash one six five eight three, uh six three, excuse me, is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um other business, okay, agenda item number twenty-two, request number one nine dash one six four four eight from Robert A. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Miss Yurai, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited, present to my right, Mr. Jason Lam. He is the district manager, last name spelled L A M. Uh this is a request for waiver, uh this is continued from April twenty-fifth, um because it's for the Pro City Gateway, Foodland. And we asked to agree to push together with the Kamakani Alii applications, which are later on the agenda. Um this involves five offices of Foodland Supermarket Limited, um background materials were provided May two thousand and eighteen or thereafter. Uh they have been, there have been no changes to the information submitted to Liquor Commission, and officers have not been convicted of felonies.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six four four eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, request number one nine dash one six four four eight is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, calling agenda item number twenty-three, excuse me, question number one nine dash one six four five zero from Robert A. Uyoka.
Robert, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Foodland, present to my right, Mr. Jason Lam. I'd like to incorporate um what we stated in item number twenty-two regarding this request for waiver.
Questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six four five zero.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, request number one nine dash one six four five zero is approved. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-four, request number one nine dash one six six zero two from Robert Uyoka on behalf of American Renaissance Academy, EBA American Renaissance Academy.
Robert Uyoka.
Renaissance, excuse me.
Robert Uyoka on on behalf of American Renaissance Academy. At this time, we'd like to respectfully request to continue this matter to May sixteenth. Um at which time, we plan to uh proceed with this matter.
Commissioner?
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-four to May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
And moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-four, request number one nine dash one six six zero two is approved.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue to May sixteenth.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's go one more. Um agenda item number twenty-five, request number one nine dash one six five nine eight from Robert A. Uyoka.
Robert Uyoka on behalf of American Renaissance Academy, at this time, we'd like to uh request to continue this matter to May sixteenth, and it is connected to the previous matter.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-five to May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second, then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five is continued to May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-six. A request number one nine dash one six six zero three from Robert A. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Miss Yurai, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited, present to my right, Mr. Jason Lam is the district manager. Um this request for waiver involves the Kamakani Kamakana Alii applications. Um it was the the same standard would apply to the request number twenty-two and twenty-three. Um none of the officers have been convicted of felonies.
Commissioners?
Mister Uyoka, is it, so in the paperwork I have, um those um officers and directors are not listed by name. So if you would, for the record,
Absolutely.
um uh state the names of those that you are requesting waiver for.
I'll state the names and I'll state when the personal histories um are dated.
Thanks.
It's Maureen Janiwal, May seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Roger Wall, May seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Dan Bessie, January eighth, two thousand nineteen. Stacy Yaromori, May eighteen, two thousand eighteen. And Kathleen Sullivan Wall, May eighteen, uh two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question?
Any further question?
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one six six zero three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-six, request number one nine dash one six six zero three is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, request number one nine dash one six six zero four from Robert A. Uyoka.
Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Foodland Supermarket, um limited with Jason Lam, district manager. At this time, I'd like to incorporate um the statements made regarding um previ- in this previous item, um agenda item number twenty-six.
Commissioners?
And these are for the same exact individuals that we noted for the record for the previous agenda item?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six six zero four.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-seven, request number one nine dash one six six zero four is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, request number one nine dash one six six zero five from Robert A. Uyoka.
Robert Uyoka with Jason Lam, district manager, I'd like to incorporate the the statements made in the previ- two previous items.
Thank you. Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six six zero five.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-eight, request number one nine dash one six six zero five is approved. Moving on to agenda item.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Twenty-nine, this is um our Arts Culture Merchants, a post event report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh Michael Sinjin on behalf of Arts Culture Merchants, et cetera.
Thank you.
I believe Miss Reed sent in the post event report on the second, okay, good.
Yes.
We have that, thank you very much.
And so this is a post event report for uh first Friday event held on April fifth, two thousand nineteen, correct?
Correct.
Right, uh why don't you give us a brief summary?
Um the event uh went well, um it was a bit slower than the previous month, I think it was we tried to rearrange some of the tents and move things around, so there's a little less uh traffic. We uh I think we had about three hundred people throughout the the total, like the whole course of the event. So it goes down a little bit for Mark, but Mark's was always kind of a little bit busier. Um right now, we're just working on trying to figure out ways to activate the streets a bit earlier, not 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 involving alcohol, but just to keep uh people down and more engaged in the arts and entertainment of the the earlier night.
And were there any incidents?
Uh there are no incidents, no.
Can we hear from enforcement?
Captain Fontaine's, the crime scene prosecutor. Um there were no violations, no warnings, no complaints for this event?
Terrific, thank you.
Oh, I have one question.
Yes.
Could you please explain to me why you continue to hold these events and continue to lose four thousand dollars an event? I don't see the rationale in it.
The I I think it's important for the community, um we enjoy doing it. Um it it does, the event itself loses money, but it brings an overall more people down to the area. It pumps money into not only our businesses, but the restaurants, the galleries, the retail shops, or maybe more for the Chinatown as a whole than ourselves.
Yeah, that that's what I wanted to hear, I mean, that's what I assumed, I just wanted to hear.
And this is art focused, it's not alcohol focused, right?
No, it's art focused, art and music, really.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, action is required, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move up to uh agenda item.
One second, Chair, uh motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items thirty and thirty-one.
Second.
Moved moved in second, all those in favor? I I vote aye, uh the adoption of decision in order, agenda items number thirty and thirty-one are approved. That's what I was gonna move up to.
I don't want to come yet.
Too much, I'm wired, baby, I need some. Good afternoon, Miss Neely.
Good afternoon, uh Joy Neely, Deputy Cooperation Counsel, appearing for the prosecution for today's adjudication items.
Thank you, calling agenda item number uh thirty-two, Arishu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi, the licensee.
Chair, due to a conflict, I'll recuse, but um may I ask permission to recuse for the next three?
Three.
Uh yes, you may.
Okay.
Total the three. Uh how do you, how would you recommend we do that for the agenda, Mr. Rai?
Um if you could identify the the matters that you are recusing from.
This is matters thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So as to the agenda item number thirty-two, we waive reading of both charges, plead no contest to both charges.
I'm sorry, did you introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, to my right is Okyo Kwak, O K Y O K W A X T. And we would waive reading of both charges and are no contest plea to both charges, I agree.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-two, the no contest plea is accepted for charge number one and charge number two.
Miss Neely, what is your recommendation for both charges?
Uh for charge one, this is a first violation for no registered manager on duty, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars. And for charge two, this is a second violation uh for adjudication purposes um of an employee consuming liquor on duty, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mister Kyuchi?
Yeah, the uh Ms. Kwak is the manager in the services agreement, the um owner licensee, Ms. Yuhar is in the audience. She insisted on coming, she also wanted Ms. Kwak to come, because this was on the Ms. Kwak's watch. So as to the first charge, Ms. Kwak had a blue card, but it had, it was for another place. So she hadn't changed it over, she apologizes, she's since rectified that. So the second charge, it was an employee who was a DJ, wasn't sitting with a customer, is a DJ, and for whatever reason, she started drinking. So that DJ since been terminated, no longer works there.
Okay, and all of your employees now know that they are not allowed to drink while on duty?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, they did, they will not drink.
They do know.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also the entertainers that you hire, the entertainment that you?
The DJs, yes.
Yes, they're they're aware of that, right?
They're, yeah, I I explained to them, there's no difference between a hostess and a DJ, so so that's gonna be communicated to the staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Miss Neely, do you have anything to?
Nothing. Motion to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one and one thousand dollars for charge two for a total of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge number one is approved. And for charge number two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved for a total of one thousand five hundred dollars in penalties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-three, new green tea. And for the record, Commissioner Mia Shiro has uh recused himself from this issue.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, to my right is Sheng Tokawa, she's Officer and Director of Licensee, we waive reading of the charge in our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, uh the no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Neely?
Uh this is a first violation of purchase of alcohol, not from a wholesaler, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
So, to explain this, like, there are five bars in White Mill Shop. The five bars, by the fact that proximity, all become friends and they're close. So this also happened to my other client, Five Old, because the bars have an arrangement where they run out of a the type of liquor, they go to the other bar to borrow the liquor. I've explained, because I represent three of the clients in there, you cannot do that, that's not allowed. But I wanted the commission to know that, because it goes back to like this old idea, go next door to your neighbor and borrow something, but this thing is something you can't borrow. So they all understand that now, uh but I wanted to explain to the commission, wasn't like they were trying to circumvent the rules.
Oh, let me explain to you, sir.
Yes.
They have been doing this for years.
Yes.
Correct? Okay, and finally, you were caught. So this is not permissible, and I understand what you're saying, but we're not gonna allow that. Because it just creates a open house type atmosphere, where you'll never run out of alcohol. Nobody will ever run out. Because brother will borrow from sister, and sister will borrow from uncle, and you'll always have alcohol. And when you have access to that much alcohol, and you close down, and your customers get into a car and get out onto Dillingham Boulevard, and head up Hofftailing Street, and get onto the freeway, and kill some uh innocent bystanders or a citizen, then this commission has to live with that. We will not accept that, al- although I appreciate your explanation, Mister Kyuchi, that's unacceptable, understand?
Now, I would like to add that that causes accounting issues as well, if you folks are mixing who's buying what. Okay, and that's also causes problems for us to know about those liquor sales. And you know, it it causes a lot, a lot of problems, so there's, you guys need to learn how to say sold out.
Understand.
And you ran out of something, you ran out of it, and then you can go get it legally through a legal wholesaler. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-four. Pandora's Cafe and Karaoke, for the record, Commissioner Mia Shiro has recused himself from this matter.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, to my immediate right is Horlo W Y R L O Agno. And behind him is his wife, Lynn Agno, A G N O. We waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest to both charges.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four, charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted. And charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Neely, your recommendations for both charges?
Um for the first charge, this is a first violation of sale of liquor to a minor, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars. Uh for this second charge, um this is a first violation of uh inadequate time records, recommend a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars.
Mister Kyuchi?
So let me take the easiest one first, which is the time cards, they did not sign in that day, I've already talked to my client. Uh we're gonna put measure in place to rectify. On the sale to a minor, it's not as so much a sale to a minor, but still illegal, what happened is uh Pandora Cafe have several parole rooms, so they serve to people, card the people, bring the alcohol in. Uh what happens, sometimes the alcohol gets passed. Uh what happens, sometimes the alcohol gets passed to a to a minor, so I had a discussion with my client, and frankly, the only way to prevent that is twenty one and over policy, so they'll be looking at that, discussing that, but um I've seen this before with other clients, and frankly, that's been my recommendation to the other clients, because when you get in a switch situation like that, when you have a karaoke room, you're gonna card everybody in, you must would just go twenty one. So, uh but they're they'll seriously look at that, I wanna let the commission know what happened. It's not like they didn't serve till minor, but they understand the gravity of this.
Thank you.
Um so maybe also consider banning?
We've done that.
You've done that?
Yes, it's it's implemented.
That doesn't work either?
It's been a couple months, uh we also had them sign waivers, it it's been working.
It's been.
It's actually been working. Um I have my bosses constantly walk the aisles by servers, I have a couple servers, and they go constantly into these rooms.
Let me ask you this, does your security um enter the karaoke rooms?
I have them going inside.
They have been going into sides, very good.
I need sure they go inside.
To watch everybody and see what's going on, okay. Very good, commission?
Motion to approve the recommended fines of one thousand dollars for charge one and two hundred fifty dollars for charge two for a total of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Move in second, all of those in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty four. The recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved for charge number one. And the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved for charge number two, for a total of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in penalties.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Keep us posted, Mr. Keiki, please.
I will.
Thank you so much, could we have Commissioner Shero? Thank you very much, calling agenda item number thirty five, Lani Kai General Store. Please introduce yourself, please.
I'm Donna Lane Weber.
And I'm Joseph Line.
Uh I'd like to turn the gavel over to Vice Chair Min, I have a conflict with the licensee. Thank you.
Ms. Xia, would you like to take?
Sure. Have to call the agenda.
Oh, sorry, calling agenda item uh agenda item thirty five, Lani Kai General Store.
And you've already stated your names for the record, um his name?
So charge one, honor about September September eleven twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a duly registered manager or assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises in violation of rule three eighty two thirty eight point nine A two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How do you wish to plead as charge number one?
Um no contest, we we both possess.
One second.
Hold on, we'll just accept the plea, and then we can, you can explain later.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to accept the plea for charge number one on agenda item thirty five?
Second.
Uh been moved in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Uh the no contest plea for charge one is accepted.
And before we go into that, Mr. and Mrs. Line Weber, Ms. Neely, could you read charge number two?
Okay, honor about September eleven twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee used a trade name with a sign displaying Ka Oha Country Store outside of the premises, as well as this state of Hawaii Department of Health packers with Ka Oha Country Store listed as the name of the licensed premises, without the prior approval of the commission, in violation of rule three eighty one seventeen point fifty nine of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How do you wish to plead to charge number two? No contest, that's our.
Thank you.
Uh motion to accept the no contest plea for charge number two of agenda item thirty five?
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
I also vote I, uh no contest plea for charge two is accepted.
Ms. Neely, can you read charge number three, please?
Honor about September eleven twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a current copy of the statutes relating to intoxicating liquor and the rules of the commission in English available on the licensed premises, in violation of rule three eighty two thirty eight point two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How do you wish to plead to charge number three?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge number three?
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
I also vote I, uh no contest plea for charge three is accepted.
Ms. Neely, if you could please uh give us your recommendation for each charge, study with charge number one?
Okay, uh for charge one, this is a first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars. For charge two, this is also a first violation, I recommend a penalty of three hundred fifty dollars. And for charge three, this is a first violation, I recommend a penalty of one hundred dollars.
Okay, just to be clear, Ms. Neely, uh charge number one, the recommendation is five hundred dollars?
That's correct.
Number two is three hundred fifty dollars?
Yes.
And charge number three, the recommendation is one hundred dollars?
Yes.
Please, um this is your opportunity to explain, comment, or you know, share your thoughts, and let's start with charge number one. And this is the charge that um there was not a duly registered manager or assistant manager assigned to the premises.
Um when we took over the store, we went, uh it went from Lani Kai General Store to Ka Oha Country Store, we opened a delicatessen. And we went and got our purple cards, and came down, took the tests, and we reissued our purple cards, but I wasn't there. And we had, who was the manager that was?
No, it was, this was given before we got our cards issued. What? Is it already, if I explain?
Oh, please, no, yes.
Okay. Um what happened was, we had the opportunity to buy Lani Kai General Store. And we made an agreement that we would take over the name, we would transfer the liquor license, and transfer the tobacco license. And our sole purpose was to have a deli, it's that that is our passion, that's our plan. We found out that we couldn't, we were working with A and B is our our uh yeah, our realtors, or our landlords.
Landlords.
We've never had a business like this before, this was my journey since I was twenty, blah blah blah. So as we're in the midst of getting all of this done, we find out that we can't use Lani Kai General Store because Donna Festa, who we were buying the business from, had some issues that she needed to take care of. Then we found out that the the tobacco license couldn't be transferred, which was not a problem, we didn't wanna sell cigarettes anyway. The third thing was the liquor, and that was in our agreement that she was gonna do the paperwork, and we were going to do what we needed to do. So on the eighteenth of July, Joe filled out the paperwork, he did what we thought we were supposed to do. Our lease agreement with A and B is eighty eight pages long, we had an attorney that went over that, all the bells and whistles, everything we had to jump through with them, there's a whole list of people that wanted that space. We had to get a new license, we had to get all of the things taken care of to get that lease. We had no idea that we were breaking the Liquor Commission's rules with changing the name. As far as the manager on duty, again, completely naive mistake on our part that we didn't do our due diligence, we didn't find out what we needed to do on our side, we were just believing that as we filled out paperwork and did the things that we needed to do, we we are upright people, we wanna run an honest business. We had no intention of breaking rules, and we have since then did the class, got things transferred over. He has the paperwork that we have turned in July eighteenth. Again, it's never been our intention to be a liquor store or anything, it we sell beer in line for people that wanna have a beer with their sandwich, or have pizza next door and have a beer, so.
And when when we took the class, that's when we got the new copies of the uh laws to keep on the premises. The ones that were on the premises were just expired, like we, just in the drawers.
So we have, everything is updated now, everything, we are aware of it, you guys will never see us in here again.
For charge three, um that there's the violation is not having a copy of the statutes, you folks are in compliance now?
We have it, yes.
Yes.
When did you take over the the uh license premises?
July fourth.
July fourth. And what's the disposition of the um the sign that states Ka Ka Oha Country Store?
Says Ka Oha Country Store.
On the front of the store, it's a lighted illuminated sign.
Did you, since the citation of violation was issued, um get permission to change the name? Has that been corrected?
We filled out the paperwork.
We've been trying to, and they just said come to the hearing, and we've been working with Mr. Fong and.
We we filled out all the paperwork we were supposed to fill out.
Okay, so that's a work in progress.
Yes.
Yes.
And you folks understand the nature of the violation that the light, that whatever name or DBA is on the license, the liquor license, is what needs to be advertiser displayed as the name of your business, you understand? So if you're, if you're, if you're Lani Kai General Store listed with us, if your license is listed as under Lani Kai General Store, but you have a sign outside your business that says Ka Oha Country Store, that's why the violation occurred, because they both need to say exactly the same thing. And if you want another DBA, you folks need to come in and ask the commission to approve that DBA.
Yeah, we had no idea, none whatsoever, we were under the pressure of A and B, and that a whole excitement of the store, the the property, the placement, everything, it was just
overwhelming.
We were, yeah, and we were just so excited, and we had no idea that we are breaking the rules.
And we also had a a liquor management agreement that was presented from like a boilerplate or something from? Commissioner, where is this from?
It's a, I'm Donna Festa, I'm actually the.
Lani Kai Juggles.
Lani Kai Juggles.
And what's your position?
Here the previous licensee.
Oh, okay.
So we submitted a management, submission of a management operation agreement between our two entities, and submitted it to the Liquor Commission, which I apologize, did you get the hot copy? When did you submit that, ma'am? It was submitted um July eighteen. It was received, acknowledged stamped as of August, and it was approved on August third.
And and what's the relevance?
So I mean, this is the next agenda.
Right, yeah, that's for the next.
Or the next one, okay, we'll we'll address that in the next agenda.
Again, uh one more question, it sounds like you folks had counsel for the transaction, but do you have counsel for any guidance or consultation on your liquor obligations?
In terms of taking the class, and we have the the material now, that do like you say, in the beginning, we were just naive, we didn't do what we should have done in terms of reading the regulations for ourselves and taking the initiative to continue, we made phone calls, and we were told that it was on the agenda, and that we would be notified and.
So yeah, I think in the future, um if you may wanna get maybe counsel to represent your, help you with the, there's gonna be a lot more forms and and issues that may come up with regards to holding a liquor license, so just so, we don't wanna see you back here.
Right, we don't, trust me, we don't wanna be back here.
Want your pleasure?
Actually, would I, a motion to go to executive session?
Second.
Uh been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote I, we're now in executive session. All right, we're back on the record. Commissioners?
Okay, so um I'm gonna make motion for agenda item thirty six, charge number one, my motion's gonna be.
Thirty five.
Sorry.
Sorry, thirty five. Um for charge number one, my motion's gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. However, that fine will be, or collection fine will be suspended for one year, so long as no similar violation occurs within that one year period. If another violation of this nature occurs, then this will become due in addition to that in addition of fine. Yes.
Second.
Been moved in second, all the all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote I, uh the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge number one is approved. However, collection will be suspended for a period of one year, provided no similar violations occur within that one year period.
And for charge number two, my motion's gonna be to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote I, uh three hundred fifty dollar fine is approved for charge number two.
And for charge number three, again, agenda item thirty five, my motion's gonna be to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote I, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you. Uh calling agenda item thirty six, Lani Kai General Store.
Could you please state your names again for the record?
Donna Lane Weber.
Joseph Line Weber.
And I will state for the record that uh Chair has recused himself due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Ms. Neely?
Honor about May third twenty eighteen, and or during the period between May third twenty eighteen and July first twenty eighteen, the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee without commission approval, transferred to another person the licensee's business for which licensee's license was issued, either openly or under any undisclosed arrangement, whereby such other person came into possession or control of the business, or took in any partner or associate in violation of section two eighty one forty one each of the Hawaii revised statutes.
How do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty six?
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote I, the no contest plea is accepted for agenda item thirty six.
Ms. Neely?
This is a first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
We might have been talking a little bit about this in the previous agenda item, but if you could um comment or any explanation. Second.
We.
Just set up the area.
Yeah. So.
Oh, can you state your name again, ma'am, for the record?
I'm sorry, this is Donna Festa, and I was the pre, I was the owner of the Lani Kai Juggles.
Thank you, go ahead.
So um I had in the in terms of the timing of the sale of the store, because I had already closed my doors, I was in the process of renewing the license. And I was told to um draw, have a management agreement drawn up between our two entities, uh and submit it to the Liquor Commission, so it's a it's a liquor management agreement, which was submitted in um July. And I believe I have here a copy of it, the commission received it in August, it was stamped, and it was also signed and approved on um in August. So to the best of my knowledge, the agreement that we wrote up pretty much spelled out who was responsible for um the store and staying on top of the the uh laws, uh providing each other with information in a timely manner, whether it had to do with the violation or any changes for reporting uh sales. So it was a pretty thorough agreement, and um I think we all felt where it had been approved by the permission that our next step was to start the um process of at the actual transfer of license between uh between us. Um I can't say for sure, I provided paperwork, I believe there's been some confusion in terms of how that got, how that would get processed, but I, to the best of my knowledge, this agreement was. Was a kind of, um. A way of informing the liquor commission what we, what our intent was in the process of getting the liquor license transferred.
Anything, anything else to add, Mr. Mike?
We thought that. These forms that we had filled out, did or notarized and sent in were dated the seventeenth of July, twenty eighteen. We thought we were in compliance with what we were supposed to be doing and.
Maybe Ms. Neely can explain why the violation occurred?
Right, just, just to be clear, the, the violation is for unauthorized transfer of business, so this occurred on May third. Um, with the store acquisition agreement, so this was all prior to the submission of the, um, management agreement. That they turned in July.
Okay, so the viola, so, so it, is this, you can perhaps explain why that is considered a violation? So the transfer of the business?
Right, so liquor license aside, even transferring the business, um, requires a liquor commission approval prior to the transfer.
We didn't, we didn't get the business, it wasn't open until July.
It's not about whether it's open or not, it's about whether the sale or a transfer or if any type of possession.
Oh.
Change has occurred. And it doesn't matter whether you're open for business or not, it, or what your agreement says, it's that there's been a. Some changing of hands. And therefore the violation occurred.
You folks seem like sincere people, however, you probably know that ignorance of law and rules is not really a defense. If you haven't done so already, you might wanna take a look at the liquor commission's website, it's robust, there's a lot of information for. People like yourselves and you might wanna consider consulting going forward, so that we don't see you here again. Having said that, my motion's gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-six.
Second.
Then move to second and all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, uh, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Uh, calling agenda item number thirty-seven, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, thirty-seven, Bevy LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mia Obsian on behalf of the licensee. Um, at this time, I'm going to request that we continue this matter, um, if possible, until the May twenty-third agenda.
Uh, I have no objection to a continuance, but I have been informed that we don't have any availabilities until June thirteenth.
Is the next available date alright, or would you like to choose a later date certain?
Uh, that's fine, June has been defined.
June thirteenth, yes.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-seven, Bevy LLC to June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-seven is continued to June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-eight, Longstroke Store number one zero nine eight eight.
This licensee has requested a continuance to June sixth, twenty nineteen, I have no objection, thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-eight to June sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor? Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight is continued to June sixth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, Nama Khuli Super.
Good afternoon, my name is Kyle Okimoto, I'm the CEO of Okimoto Group, doing business as Nama Khuli Super. And to my right is Randy Raghmat, R A, oh, sorry, R A G M A T. Uh, she's my, uh, liquor buyer.
Okay, um, honor about February sixteen, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor. Specifically Swastika Maharajan. At the license premises in violation of section two eighty-one seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
How would you like to plead?
Um, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, this is a second violation for adjudication purposes, um. They were, there was also a violation in twenty eighteen. Uh, such I recommend a penalty of two thousand dollars.
Sure, this is, uh, sale to a minor, what happened?
So, um, so after the one that she had mentioned from a year, less than a year ago. Uh, we had gone through rigorous training with actually both of our stores, well, all three of our stores. And, um, I guess this cashier in, uh, that had told them about this time. Um, even though she was trained, she's been working for us for, I think, three years at the time. Um, what happened was she had gone through, she had, she had asked for ID, she looked up the ID. And the next step in our procedure is to enter the birthdate into the computer, which will tell you if they're old enough or not. And she didn't do that last part. Um, when I asked her why, she said she thought she did the math right and she knew that, you know, that's what the computer is for, is enter the date and. So we're, um, kind of out of words that she would not. She would go through all of that and then get to the very end and then not enter the date into the system.
Ms. Neely, um, was a vertical ID presented?
Yes.
And we had asked her, but she knew that when the vertical, you know, that, I don't know, she didn't know what to say, so.
Uh, what was, was a date punched in, did she punch in a?
No, she did not punch in the date.
She just looked at the ID.
She had looked at it and she thought that it was.
And then processed the sale.
She looked at a vertical ID and thought that that was going to be correct. There's not too many adults that turn twenty-one. That keep their vertical IDs, they go right down and get a horizontal because that's the whole thing. Vertical ID, the individual that, when they first got that license had to be under twenty-one.
So that should be a big red flag for all of your cashiers. And that. Perhaps reminding them that going through the motions doesn't meet the requirements. You know, that acting like you're actually looking and acting like you're trying to make sure they're twenty-one. Is not the same as actually making sure that they're twenty-one before you sell it to them. You know, that, and we found that some folks don't understand the difference between just going through the motions of checking ID. Checking the ID is not, is not the law. Not selling to twenty-one and, uh, to under twenty-one is the law. So they feel that if they just check the ID, that that's meeting the requirement. That, so perhaps there's a disconnect between. Checking the ID is to help you meet the requirement, it's not the whole requirement, does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Correct. Was there any discipline or consequences to the employee?
Well, we had told everyone from after last year's incident that. Any, if anyone gets caught selling alcohol to a minor, that they'll be terminated, so we, of course, we have to fire her.
Okay, and you have two other stores or establishments?
Yes.
And it was just communicated, um, throughout all your stores and employees?
Yes.
Um, have you considered something along the lines of secret shopper, or are you and your management team just watching, monitoring the employee?
Uh, Commissioner, again, my name is Wendy Radmat, R A G M A T. I'm a buyer for the store, which is kind of unusual, um, that I'm here in front of the commission. So let me kind of clarify why I'm here. Um, in one of my previous stages of employment, I worked for Time Supermarket and I was a company trainer for about a year. Um, during that timeframe, I was responsible for conducting cashier training for Time Supermarket cashers. And in turn, I was responsible for training for liquor. Um, so this is my first time in front of the commission, but not my first rodeo within the liquor industry. So during the first stint, I knew about it, they took steps in store operations to take care of what they needed to do to be trained. After this incident, however, um, I did get involved. So I put together, I went through their current training, kind of revise it, went through what I know that we need to do to be successful. And do our due, due diligence for our company. One of our stores falls under Maui County, the other two fall under Honolulu County. We are in the process of going through Maui liquor laws as well to make sure that we, um, take care of that training piece from Maui County as well, so we can. Do real true, like, company-wide cater to each liquor commission. We have done the Honolulu piece, so we're now, um, going through a train, the trainer program with our supervisors and the intern. We'll make sure that it gets enforced. Um, in addition to the, the regular training that will happen for the new cashiers, we're gonna have monthly like reminders and updates for each cashier. To again, help our company do due diligence to make sure that this does not happen again.
Hearing that you folks have done a lot of robust, um. Taken a lot of robust action to try and prevent this from happening. Um, my motion is to issue a, uh, one thousand dollar fine.
Second. Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-nine, a fine of one thousand dollars will be assessed.
Thank you.
Thank you for. Calling agenda item forty, Royal Mini Mark LLC.
Aloha, members. Uh, I'm the authorized agent for Royal Mark, uh, Royal Mini Mark LLC. Uh, good to see you so soon, unfortunately, I'm at the other table.
And what's your name, sir?
David Beasley, B E A S L E Y.
Thank you.
The charges, honor about March second, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam Tomus. At the license premises in violation of section two eighty-one seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Beasley, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number forty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Beasley, this is a sale to a minor, what happened?
I wasn't, uh, there when it happened, so I don't know exactly. Um, my wife has had problems with her eyes and I got her several pairs of reading glasses. To keep with anything and she's started using a magnifying glass. And she told me that she looked at it and it was right. I don't know, I looked at, uh, after this, after she reported the event to me. I took the magnifying glass and this thing was like from nineteen seventy and had been scratches all over. And so I immediately went out, bought her a six inch. Magnifying glass that was clean and clear and brand new.
With a light?
It doesn't have the light, no.
Upgrade to the light.
We, we, we have good light in our, in our store, we recently changed all LED, so it's, you know, a roach won't even wanna go in there.
Ms. Neely was a vertical ID presented, this was a verti, vertical ID presented. So that should be the first red flag, I, I don't think she needs a magnifying glass to see. If it's this way or this way.
Right.
Okay, so if it's this way, she needs to take extra precautions because that means that. The license was issued before that person turned twenty-one.
Absolutely.
So they were likely not twenty-one yet.
Right, and to that point, um, I heard, uh, your comment earlier about the vertical IDs. And surprisingly enough, people that twenty-one, people that turn twenty-one are pretty lazy. And they keep that vertical ID, we see a bit of them, is, that's all I wanna say about that.
Alright, well, I, I hearing, I, I understand that, but, um. Being able to identify whether someone is of age to purchase alcohol is. Make a very important part of her job, so if she's not able to do that, perhaps you folks wanna look into hiring a manager who can easily read IDs.
Vital. Right, it is.
Uh, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number forty, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number forty-one. Hoku Market. Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon. Time no see, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, James Lee representing Jung Hwan Chung, J U N G is the last name, DBA Hoku Market. Will waive the, uh, reading of the charge and we enter the plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, this is the first violation of sale of liquor to minor, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Lee?
Uh, yes, if I may. Uh, mom was on duty that day, uh, so, so, not mom and pop store, but mom and son's store. Mom was on duty, she has a severe rheumatoid arthritis and she was on pain medication. And, you know, they've been in business for five years and this is the first time this happened. And mom is really disgusted with her, with this matter and. So as a result, uh, Mr. Jung here, uh, is actively looking for buyer to sell the business. Cause he realized that mom cannot be counted on to work anymore, so that's, that's the plan right now.
Well, we're sorry that this occurred. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number forty-one, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley.
Thank you.
We want to move agenda item number forty-two, administrative update, ma'am?
Uh, we have our sheet in our packet.
Yes. And via email.
I would wanna state for the record, thank you to Ms. Anna Harai, who has done an amazing job this year. Um, and thank you for always providing us with detailed and organized reports.
Second, that motion. Yes, thank you, Emma. Do we have, uh, calling agenda item number forty-three, do we have any administrative matters? None from the commission, none from the administration? Thank you all for coming.